Okay, I call this work session, regular meeting, Tuesday, September 14th, 7:00 PM to order.
Ms. Crossen, unfortunately, our secretary could not be with us tonight, so I'd like to make a motion to name Colleen Rush as our temporary secretary for the night.
Second?
Second.
Okay. On favor?
Aye.
All right, so be it. Yes. Just wanted to let everyone know, well, let's do a, that's for announcements. Can we do a roll call?
Mr. Birdnick?
Present.
Mrs. Brancato?
Here.
Mrs. Crossen?
Here.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mrs. Eilenberg?
Here.
Mr. Godixon?
Present.
Mr. Martin?
Present.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Panofsky?
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America.
Absolutely, Mr. Speaker, God bless us all.
All right, for announcements, we had an executive session at 6:00 PM for 40 minutes for personnel reasons. And then also, we're going to have Bobby Loftus, our tax collector. She's going to update the community on the tax status.
Mrs. Crossen, do you want me here or there?
You can come over to the desk.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening. I just, do I have to have my ask on to speak? Okay. I just wanted to give you an update on the tax office for the last two months because discount is officially over. My reports have been given in and verifying, verified that everything is correct, so I thought you might like a little update. In July, I had 1,898 payments. Forty of them were first installments, so 1,858 were just regular payments. That was a total of $7,870,311.18. The interims for that month were $11,241.93. So for the month of July, I took in $7,881,553.11. August, I had 7,723 payments. 251 were installments, first installments. Seven of them were second installments, and two were third installments. So regular payments was 7,463 payments. The real estate for August is, was $36,673,436.87. The interims were $35,328.65. So the total collected for August was $36,708,765.52. So the combined for the discount period is $44,590,318.63. We had 291 people choose installments. That was a little lower than last year. Last year, we had 296. So I took the difference between last year's collections for discount and this year's collections for discount. This year's collections was $1,851,1372 higher than last year's. The interims for 2021, for those two months, was $46,570.50. The interims for 2020 were $22,196.51. So we collected $24,373.99 more this year than we did last year. And that's basically Doutrich Farm. I have, I think, six homes in Doutrich Farm that are either going to settlement or have been settlement, I still don't have the names for, even though they're all sold. And I get interims tomorrow, and I think I'm getting six more for Doutrich Homes for the dwellings. Since we did the reports, I've had 50 more people pay regulars, not installments, regulars. So as of today, regulars, not including installments, I have 641 people left to collect. And that's out of 10,400. So I think it was a very good discount period. There's some people that only pay in face, and there's some people that only pay the end of the year. With the township and county, I only have 150 parcels left. So if this continues on the same pace as the township and county, we should be in very good standards. And this is only Warminster, this is not Southampton or Ivyland. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Would I recommend that we invite, you know, the tax collector from Upper Southampton and Ivyland to come and present their results as well?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I have to say, Mrs. Loftus actually reached out so she could, so she could, you know, let the community know what has been brought in. But yes, we can absolutely reach out.
Thank you again, Mrs. Loftus, for coming and sharing that information.
Thank you. Have a good night. Okay, so next we have student presentations. We're going to have Michael Cotelli, William Tenet High School. If you could, yeah, go right over to the podium.
Hello, my name is Michael Cotelli, and I'm a student government officer at William Tenet. I'm just going to share some events that are going on at our school right now. Fall sports have began, and Picture Day will take place on the 22nd and 23rd. As well as on the 23rd, we will have virtual back-to-school night at 7:00 PM. And homecoming nominations have started. And instead of a homecoming dance, details are still being worked out, but we are planning an activity before the homecoming game, which will consist of food trucks and such at 4:30 PM. NHS and Civitas applications have been turned in, and the SATs will be hosted at William Tenet on October 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Dr. Ben, Superintendent Report.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. As we do, this is an opportunity for us to update on the Health and Safety Plan. And in this case, because of the new mandates, we're required to do them anytime there are significant changes. So we're going to... So unlike last year, instead of totally new presentations, we're building the presentation on top of the previous, so it's always in one place for the public to find the information. So I need to skip forward. This is the information that was covered at the last meeting. So this is going to focus on the changes and what's different, rather than going through the whole presentation of the plan again. And I just ask everyone, you know, to remember that, you know, this has been probably one of the most tumultuous periods in public education in a generation, if not longer. So this is challenging for everyone that's been involved in this process. Just a reminder that we're operating upon a new process, the ESER, American Recovery Plan, ESER, and our Health and Safety Plan. Because of that process, anytime there are six significant changes, we are asked to update those changes and provide them to the school board for approval, except for things that obviously are mandated by law, then we're asked to take immediate action and then get them approved.
I'm so sorry, if you could just give me one second. If I could ask that everyone in the audience wear a mask. This is a school building, and it is, it is necessary for you to put a mask on. And I understand that you may not want to, and that's your option, and if you don't want to, you're going to have to leave. You need to have a mask on. Who doesn't have a mask on? I do need everyone to put a mask on in a school building. Thank you.
Well, significant changes that occurred through guidance have come from, obviously, two events at the Bucks County Health Department. The most recent one was October 23rd. Obviously, we received on August 31st the order from Acting Secretary of the Pennsylvania Department of Health that went into effect on 9/7. Then subsequent to that, PD answers to providing FAQs clarifying that order that was sent out to superintendents, and then also publicized on their website for the public to see. Subsequent to that, then later, we received a direct communication from the Deputy Secretary of Education, providing more guidance related to the expectations of schools and superintendents. The highlights of the Safety Plan changes were that we adjusted to align with the changes to the guidance on the Bucks County Health Department. For example, there was a change with regards to how contact tracing was going to be handled. For example, initially, they were going to focus solely on the hospitals and prisons and those type of things, not because of not wanting to, but because of resources. That was changed to still follow the CDC guidelines, collaboration between the school district and the health department to try to conduct contact tracing. The change also makes sure that we are aligned with the order for the Acting Secretary, the update from PD guidance regarding the order. And then also, we updated the plan to follow previous, a vote-approved guidelines regarding cardiac screening for student athletes. Specific to the athletic one, just want to make sure it's highlighted and pointed out, is that what was shared previously is that we obviously are following the six specific sports-related risk factors that were provided in the decision-making process. We also are again following the recommendation from the American Academy of Pediatrics and others about any student athlete who's impacted by COVID to get a clearance from a cardiologist. One of the things that we built in to create more flexibility in that situation was also adding the addition of a signed waiver from the student's primary care physician on the CSD-approved form as a mechanism to provide some relief and consideration to our parents who may have difficulty getting in to see a cardiologist. Of note, we did have, for example, one case where this provision actually helped probably save the life of a student. Because when they did examination, it turned out to be that the student did have a cardiac issue. And we could have been one of the districts that unfortunately been on the sad side of that. So this provision that was started with Dr. Seidenberg and the team in place actually did have a very successful preventative measure that was in place for one of our students, which is a good thing. The Bucks County Health Department made updates regarding these number of things. This is their exact wording. I'm not going to go through and read everything. As always, we publicize this. They continue their recommendation that anyone who's 12 years or older become vaccinated. They also go on to cite, when it comes to educators, the endorsement of that provision from the National Education Association and American Federation of Teachers. We have not pursued any mandating. We're focusing on understanding what is the current status of our employees with vaccination and unvaccinated. As you know, those will be subject to weekly testing as a measure that we have in place right now in Centennial. The county did provide an update on the mask and face coverings, pretty much saying to follow the CDC guidelines regardless of your vaccination status, and then also reiterating the need to follow the guidelines, which were mandates actually for the bus transportation system for public schools. Physical distancing is to maintain three feet. We do, we do set up all of our classrooms where possible to maintain the three feet. We also employ other mitigation strategies, so when there's a challenge with maintaining three feet, we do try to implement those other strategies as mitigation efforts if we are not able to get to three feet. Testing, we're consistent with individuals who have symptoms, are consistent with COVID-19, should be referred to testing. We continue to partner with the Bucks County Health Department for...
Bucks County?
Yes, Bucks County Health Department. The Bucks County Health Department with regards to, thank you, Ms. Brancato, the Bucks County... No, I said, no, so thank you. The Bucks County Health Department with regards to supporting our employees with testing if there are symptoms that are identified. Again, update with the contact tracing, based on the guidance from Pennsylvania Department of Health and also the CDC. The update they made was regarding a reporting and a collaborative encouragement from both school district and the county encouraging parents to report active cases. And we are required, as a school district, to report active cases to the health department. Isolation and quarantine, they align themselves with the CDC recommendations. Isolation and quarantine is a health department decision. Schools are by school code due exclusion based on a communicable disease, which is what our nurses handle at the school level. The order from the secretary, which is a very lengthy document, highlights pretty much is that we are expected to have everyone, teachers, students, staff, even visitors, in any facility to be wearing a mask, which is what Ms. Crossen just spoke to. We are required to enforce it. We don't have an option with regards to the order. We also are asked to provide reasonable accommodations, and there's a process that's spelled out for those accommodations for those who qualify. We also are, the order does not supersede or interfere with the transportation order from the federal government regarding masking on buses. It applies again to everyone in a school building, regardless of their status. It went into effect on September 7th at 12:01 AM. It means a covering of the nose and mouth, and it defines the material, so it does require the mouth and the nose to actually be covered. For those who qualify, there's a provision for alternative face covering, but it has to go through a process. And it also says that it is only when it's not possible to wear a face covering. Again, they use words like must require. You know, they recognize that we also can have opportunity for a removal of masks indoors, that's for, when you're not around other people. So if you're working in your individual spot and not around other people, you can take your mask off. We do also have mask breaks that the schools are implementing for our students. It's not uncommon, I was at the high school today, and a lot of the teachers take the students outside when they can for class, to allow that opportunity and still keep teaching. We are expected to follow an established process for addressing exemptions to the process. And again, they reiterated our need to enforce the order. We then subsequently received another letter from the Deputy Secretary, spelling out that the mask policy is not an optional policy. It is a mandate. That we are not allowed to permit parents to sign off without evidence. If we do so, we're not in compliance with the order. That we must require all individuals to have and wear a mask unless there's a documented medical, mental health condition or disability that precludes it, and it has to be documented. Alternatives to the face covering are only used when you have tried other means and it's the last resort, and other things have been exhausted. Part of that exception process is under Section 504 of the Federal Code, IDEA, and then also a medical doctor who has to sign off and provide certain specifics, which we'll share, that our legal counsel provided to us. Legal counsel advice. We have had three, four different attorneys provide legal input. Our general counsel, who represents the district, the solicitor. We have had our special ed counsel. We have had also advice given to us at the time we were in litigation, that was ultimately removed and dismissed, and then also legal counsel from the IU. And they all recommend consistently to follow the CDC and Commonwealth guidance, because it's the most legally defensible position that the district can be in. They also go on to state that the order contemplates the requirements that must be followed, that unless you qualify under Section 3 for any exceptions. Consequences that have been communicated to us. They include for any of us in the district, including the board they sent out, individual personal liability for willful misconduct, that it could remove your immunity from liability on the political subdivision tort claims. So in essence, we can be sued as individuals for not compliance.
Can you show us something?
In a district, I can actually show you what the legal counsel put in writing.
Because all you're going to get from me is practice.
Again, this is legal counsel advice, and I can share it, that these are the possible consequences that could result. The medical exemption, that we have an obligation to determine what the medical condition is based on objective criteria that it simply, that it, that does not just rely on because the parent says so. We also got an opinion from our insurance carrier. Our insurance carrier recommended following the guidance, or be in a position that they may not provide insurance coverage for failure to comply is a possible outcome. Failing to abide by the mandate is, we can't just take the parent's note. The specifics regarding a doctor's note, that it should not be accepted unless we receive in writing a substantiation of the diagnosis, the treatment plan, and restrictions. They've advised if the medical provider refuses, the school has a clear basis for denying the exemption. Our form that we have in place for the waiver does allow the physician to do that and provide that information to the school district. Questions often come about student compliance. In short, your student discipline code of conduct is what we are supposed to address student compliance with in this process. To the part about educators who are licensed by the Commonwealth, we are, and we have received communication directly to us, even by our association, that we are expected to abide by the order, or we could be subject to a violation of professional practice and conduct for educators' code at the state level. And also, the legal obligations are stated there, that we are prohibited, and by oath as a commissioned officer, at this point, until something is determined to say the order is illegal, that we must comply in trying to implement the order. Within the school board policy, the board has Employee Code of Ethics, which talks about compliance and possible enforcement. It basically says that each employee shall uphold all the laws and regulations of the United States and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and all other applicable government entities that apply to us. And then it goes on to spell out in the policy what the possible consequences are for failing to do that as an employee. So district employees have the local policy from the board, and we're also, if we're licensed like a teacher and administrator, we have also expectations and guidance given to us by the state that we are expected to follow. Health and Safety Plan alignment concerns have been raised, some by parents as questions, and then also by administrators as we've talked through this. We do have the potential for an alignment issue and concern. In fact, you heard about this at the last meeting when a parent spoke, who has, for example, a middle schooler, and then a high schooler who's at MBIT, and there's two different standards that are being applied. This is not about the program. The program is great, in conversation with our high school staff. We're only speaking about health and safety procedure alignment with regards to the MBIT students, who are Centennial School District students. They go there for a program of services, they are still our students. The mask waiver process, we believe, needs to have some alignment done on it, because of the fact that we possibly creates an additional exposure, because you have four different sending school districts. In effect, it creates a challenge also with contact tracing. If a student could actually go into MBIT for a morning session and return back into the high school in afternoon session, now we got to try to figure out how to do contact tracing, not only at that school, but also our high school. It also has the potential to impact students who had no interaction with MBIT. Because then, they now become a close contact potentially within the high school. So it could go on to affect school operations and attendance. In essence, we may have to exclude students at the high school if they meet the close contact requirement who had no interaction at MBIT at all. There is a need in the conversation that the district's position is how our representation is represented at MBIT. That whatever the district is doing, that is what needs to be spoken to with regards to trying to establish. I've had wonderful conversations with Kathy. We probably could have done some things differently as a force-sending district to help her. So for example, they're managing waiver process that could be different for four different entities, which is not necessarily fair to them. So an example I gave her is, we probably should have handled the waiver process and then let them focus on addendums to it. So for example, if you qualify for waiver, but you may go over there and example she is, if you're in a dental health program, you got to have a mask, because you can't do the program without being more than, you know, less than three feet from this person for more than 15 minutes. So that is something that has to be figured out and addressed in the process, as well as students who are speaking and talked about the inconsistencies that exist between the two organizations. So those are the highlights of the changes. Again, the plan has been posted since Friday, I believe, for viewing. So, so any questions from the board members?
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you, Dr. Ben. Mrs. Eilenberg?
Thank you. Approval of agenda, be it resolved at the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 4.1 approves the September 14th, 2021 agenda as per the attached. Are there any corrections that need to be made that are allowed by PA law? Anyone? Seeing none?
Do we need to add on to the agenda the motion that we already had to appoint Mrs. Rush's secretary?
Is that necessary?
Like, just for the minutes, or?
I think that is necessary to add it to the minutes.
Okay.
It would be part of the minutes anyway, correct?
When the motion was made, we were not in session.
Right.
So...
Okay, so...
Technically.
I think we should make an official record of it while we are in session.
Okay. So, so we'll make that in the minutes that Colleen will now be acting as secretary. Thank you.
And I guess you need a second for that?
Second.
May I have a second? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Next would be community comments. Okay. Can you come up, if you could go over to, not to the podium, but over to the freestanding mic? Thank you.
So the public comment period will be no more than 30 minutes unless extended by the majority of the board. Each resident or taxpayer who has previously registered will have up to three minutes to speak. When your name is called, please approach the microphone and announce your name and address before making your comments. Board Policy 903 governs participation at board meetings. If you exceed your three minutes, your time will end. Comments that are personally directed, abusive, or obscene will result in your remarks being interrupted or your time being terminated. Disruptive or disorderly conduct by members of the public, including but not limited to speaking when others are making public comment, is not permitted and may result in the meeting being recessed or adjourned. And our first community comment is from Stacy Hill. Stacy, if you could please come to the microphone?
My name is Stacy Hill. My address is...
You guys have the mic ones?
My name is Stacy Hill. My address is 962 Independence Road, Warminster. I heard a lot, I saw a lot about personal liability, willful misconduct by not following an order. What about federal law? Masks, PCR tests, and all available COVID vaccines are under EUA. Federal law Title 21 USC states the following about products granted emergency use, that individuals to whom the product is administered are informed of the option to accept or refuse administration of the product. Title 21, we are granted by right, the right by federal law, to refuse administration of a product that is granted emergency authorization usage. Again, federal law, Title 21. The Equal Protection Clause of the 14th Amendment provides that any state may not deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws. The Supreme Court has ruled that students have a legitimate entitlement to a public education as a property right. See Goss versus Lopez. I have been told multiple times that the district is justified in your violation of federal law because of a board vote or a state order. You violate federal law and give us an ultimatum to abide by it or go virtual? In 1954, the Supreme Court interpreted the Equal Protection Clause's requirement in Brown versus the Board of Education. It states, "We conclude in the field of public education that the doctrine of separate but equal has no place. Separate educational facilities are inherently unequal, therefore we hold that the plaintiffs are by reason of the segregation complained of deprived of equal protection of the laws guaranteed by the 14th Amendment." Child abuse in Title 23 of Pennsylvania Criminal Code, interfering with the breathing of a child is child abuse. Okay? PA Criminal Code. PA Criminal Code, Title 23. Centennial Board members are obligated to their oath of office. 24 PS 3-321, I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and that I will discharge my duties with office and fidelity. Board policy states, "All board policies, administrative regulations, practices, and customs of the school district are intended to be lawful and constitutional and are to be given a lawful and constitutional interpretation. Board policies and procedures and administrative regulations are limited by legal constraints and are not intended to give an individual a cause of action not independently established in law. Board policies and procedures and administrative regulations shall not preempt, create, supplant, expand, or restrict the rights or liabilities of students, employees, residents, or others within the school community beyond those established in law. Under your rules of construction, neither the board nor the administration intends to violate federal or state constitutions or any applicable law. If any policy or procedure or administrative regulation can be given multiple interpretations, the board and the administration intend that only constitutional and lawful interpretations shall be valid." Order, mandate, rule, advice, no. Lawful and constitutional. I am filing a Centennial School District Form Number 000-AR-0, request for exception to board policy, on the grounds that this health and safety plan and the protocols being implemented to enforce this plan are in violation of federal law, the United States Constitution, PA Criminal Code. You are in violation of your oath and school board policy. You are individually being held responsible for the violations by the citizens of this school district.
Thank you for your, thank you for your comments.
The next comment is Tiffany Budnick.
Hi Tiffany. Could you just turn it off?
Yeah, turn it off.
So the mic is not, still not off?
Still not on.
You guys have control of the mic, I think.
Yes, we do.
Go to the podium, that way you get on the.
Just turn, because we can't turn the mic from the top.
I turned the mic on.
Good job, guys!
So the mic's still on, or that I could button on?
It's like hard.
Vote on one second.
Way to be unlawful.
Vote on one second.
Don't have a problem, go for it.
Hello? Okay. Tiffany Budnick, 561 Walter Road.
It's off again. Don't forget.
Stop the clock.
Stop the clock. Stop the clock. Reset the clock.
Calling you, she's not.
Because you're not allowed to.
Just don't touch it. Don't touch the podium. Use the podium.
Go to the podium.
Go to the podium, just don't use that. No, go to the podium. Use the podium.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Tiffany Budnick, 561 Walter Road, Warminster. I just wanted to touch on a few board policies, interpretation and limitations. All school board policies, administrative regulations, policies, and customs of the school board are intended to be lawful and constitutional and are to be given the lawful and constitutional interpretation. What the board is doing is not constitutional. The second thing I wanted to touch on is the Pfizer biotech COVID-19 vaccine has not been approved or licensed by the US Food and Drug Administration, FDA, but has been authorized for emergency use by the FDA under an EUA to prevent COVID for use in people 16 years of age and older. The cormidity, cormidity or whatever, COVID vaccine is the only Pfizer vaccine that has been approved by the FDA, and it is not manufactured yet. All right, in this plan, you also state that all unvaccinated employees will be COVID tested. Why not the vaccinated? People that who are vaccinated can also spread the virus. This is discrimination. Discrimination shall mean to treat individuals differently or to harass or victimize based on protests, clarifications, including race, color, age, creed, religion, sex, sexual orientation, genetic information, national origin, marital status, pregnancy, handicap, or disability. So, I am a bus driver, and we are allowed to believe that this virus is unsafe? Whether we want to get it or not, should not be voted by any of you. Okay? You are not law. It is not law, and it is not approved by the FDA. Nor should you test unvaccinated people only, because this is discrimination. You should, if you want to test people, you need to include everybody. Including all of you!
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you for speaking.
Next, we have Christopher Hardyman.
My name is Chris Hardyman. I go to William 10th, 1484 Church Road. On the first day of school, I went to school without a mask, and I was told to go. I was then told that I could either come to school without a mask, or I could attend online school. Online school is not good for everyone. Online school is not a good supplement for me. But I won't wear a mask, so I'm going to online school. We have looked into getting my GED, and honestly, that is what's probably going to happen. Because you guys took the option for me to not wear a mask away from me. I've been asked by some people whose decision was this, and it was mine. I think that it is not fair that you guys get to make decisions for people without listening and taking into consideration what they say. I think if you were to take a poll of this room, you'd realize that by an overwhelming majority, people don't want to be forced to do something that they don't want to do. I was only asking for a choice, and you guys took that away from me. I'm gonna end this with a quote by Abraham Lincoln, "Those who deny freedom to others deserve it not for themselves."
Thank you for speaking. Thank you for coming up. That took a lot. Can I just ask you, please don't quit. Please don't quit.
Do you know how many kids are prepping to be pulled out of the district right now?
This is not.
This is in your hands.
I'm just talking. I'm just talking. Daryl, I'm just talking to the young man, just for a second. Okay. Let's move forward. Just asking the young man, please. Colleen, can you call the next? Please.
Next, we have Lauren McCray.
My name is Lauren McCray. I live on 643 Green Court. We see what's going on, and we do not consent. It started with a mask, now a vaccine clinics in school. Next up is vaccine mandates for children. Parents know where to get the COVID vaccine. They know where CVS, Walgreens, and the Walmarts are. Kids aren't vaccinated because their parents don't want them to be. While state legislators tried all summer to lower the age of consent, you have been planning on bringing clinics into our children's school. Are the clinics enough, or is the district planning on implementing all the CDC's six-way schools can promote COVID-19 vaccines, which include posters telling kids they can't get back to their activities until they've been vaccinated, and educating teachers and staff on how to expel vaccine myths and information? Let's discuss number three, arming school staff with resources for answering questions. I do have a lot of questions. For example, how come the BBC reported on September 3rd that the UK JCVI said that because children are at such a low risk from the virus, they decided against vaccinating most 12- to 15-year-olds? Maybe the fact that one in nine adolescents suffered a severe adverse event had something to do with it. Why are 12 out of 13 most vaccinated countries in the world listed by the CDC as a travel risk? How come Israel is reporting the highest infection rate in the world despite being given three and four doses? Well, it's easy to say it's a pandemic of the unvaccinated when you start counting in January, and mostly everyone was unvaccinated, but we see through the manipulation. Can someone on the board tell me why it's a good idea to vaccinate young boys when they are six times more likely to suffer from heart problems than be hospitalized from COVID? Is The Telegraph now reporting misinformation? How come the CDC downgraded the definition of a vaccine from a product that produces immunity to a preparation that stimulates an immune response for protection? Is it because the COVID vaccine wasn't producing immunity and therefore didn't meet the definition of a vaccine? Dr. Sanjay Gupta was discussing a study out of Israel about how natural immunity provides better protection than vaccines alone. He asked Dr. Fauci if people with natural immunity should get the vaccine. Dr. Fauci responded by saying he doesn't have a firm answer, and went on to say that we need to sit down and discuss natural immunity, and that there is an argument for it. Shouldn't this be figured out before any mandates? The CDC doesn't want to discuss the Singapore T-cell study that shows cross-immunity, the Israel study that shows natural immunity provides 13 times better protection than the vaccine, or this other study that shows robust, durable natural immunity 12 months post-infection. Anyone telling you that their views are the only ones that are right in having a different opinion is dangerous misinformation, is akin to that of occult mentality. It creeps me out, honestly. Whatever happened to diversity of thought? Must we all think the same and act the same? It is not your place to indoctrinate our minor children about medical decision-making. My daughter friends are talking about how they want to get the shots so they don't have to wear a mask. They are just kids. How many of them will forge their parents' consent because of this? Schools will no longer be safe if these vaccine clinics are allowed.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking.
Good evening, Kiri Sellers, 593 New Road. Tonight, I was planning to discuss statistics and laws. I was planning to present facts and case studies to the board, but I realized that there are far more intelligent people and articulate people that are making those arguments, and in the end, it won't matter. It doesn't matter how much evidence is presented here tonight, like it hasn't mattered in the past. You will make your decision and vote based on your opinions and your political agenda and your ideology. So tonight, I am addressing the community. I am addressing every member in the community in this great nation to stand up and say no. Say no to infringement on our constitutional rights. Say no to fear-mandering. Say no to division in our community and our country. Say no to the elitist tyrannical regime. We understand that, we need to understand that medicine is not one size fits all. We need to look at the aspects of medicine and science and decide what is the best course of action for us and our families. We need to stop listening to the terms like "the science" and "the data," which is consistently used as propaganda instead of actual medical information. We hear the argument a lot about how much is one life worth? One life lost is not, is one life too many. Although that may be true, I ask you, is one life worth more than your freedom? If the answer is yes, then why, what about all the casualties of war? What about every soldier who's laying down their life fighting against slavery, fascism, terrorism, et cetera? By that logic, their lives were worth more than our freedoms, and by that, we should never be in another war again. We should never take arms against a radical ideology, and we should just submit and be a good obedient dogs. But we are not that. That is not who America is. We are a nation of fighters. We are a nation of, we fight against injustice and wrongdoings, and we fight for a better tomorrow. We need to stand up and courageously defend our rights and freedoms. We need to stop being pusillanimous. We need to stand together and be neighborly and understanding. We need to find common ground and actual discussions and learn to respect one another again. We need to learn to agree to disagree. Every member of the board, like every other government entities, has sworn an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution. Yet again, we watch them violate this oath over and over. I myself have taken that same oath, and is why I'm standing here today. We need to remind that the people in position were not elected or appointed by God, but by we, the people. And we need to place them in the positions that they were to represent us, not to rule us. We need to recall them when they fail. And we need to wake up and realize that because the second we allow them to take our freedoms away from us, I promise you, they will not give them back.
Thank you for speaking.
Thank you, Kiri.
Hi, my name is Heather Zieckel, 681 Newtown Road. I'm gonna talk on a personal level. I am a parent of three kids, two of which already graduated from William 10th High School, and my last one is a junior at William 10th High School. We moved to Warminster 14 years ago to give our kids a better future. 10 years ago, I was given a great opportunity to become a part of the Centennial team by being trained to be a school bus driver. Do you know when people say, "You missed your calling"? Well, I am very lucky to have found mine, working with kids, being a school bus driver. People ask me all the time, "How can you be a school bus driver?" And I say, "How can I not?" Yes, being a school bus driver is very challenging, but the rewards are so much more. I take great privilege and honor being a part of my students' school career. To be able to watch them grow, mature, and move to the next level, it doesn't get any better for me. I take the time to know all my students personally. Surprisingly, I know every single one of their names. Every one of my students and parents, and every, I know, you ask any one of my students and parents, and they can tell you that I care very deeply for every single one of them. So many employees have their own personal story of how they have impacted a student or many students in Centennial in a positive way. I am just one example. We chose to be a positive asset to our community and to our school district. We chose Centennial. But for the first time, it is very disheartening to me to see many employees so upset, discouraged, and fearful of their jobs because they feel they are not given the choice or freedom to choose to decline this COVID-19 vaccine. We do not know the reasoning behind their decision, but I assure, but I assure that every Centennial employee's main focus is student safety. We are doing everything we are told to do to keep our students safe. Taking radical steps to mandate this vaccine could jeopardize valuable employees or lack of. So I implore you to deny this health and safety plan regarding vaccine mandate, because in the end, the people that will suffer the most are the students, the parents, and the community who put their trust in us to be there for them every school day. And we all know that good help is very hard to find.
Thank you for speaking, Heather. And yes, every single one of your students love you. Absolutely. Thank you. Can I just make a request before we move on? One second. I just had someone walk in who does not have a mask on. In order to stay in this meeting, you must have a mask on. We have some for you. You have one?
Next is.
Mrs. Crossen?
N, I'm sorry, I.
Can I just ask a question? Did I not hear correctly? We're not mandating the vaccine, is that correct?
No, we're not.
You're voting to recommend to mandate the vaccine. That's what it says.
If you look at the play on words, "Should mandate." It's a very big play on words.
Oh, no, we're not.
Mr. Mr. I'm sorry, I asked the board, I asked the board president.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes, thank you.
The plan actually speaks to what the county and others have recommended, and we're supposed to articulate that information, and we did in the plan. So that's tied to, if you look at it, what they have recommended. But we have not put forth any recommendation from administration to mandate the vaccination at all.
Thank you.
Next is Tanya. Last name, N-E-D-E-O-G-L-O. Okay.
So glad. Okay. Good evening, faculty, staff, neighbors, and friends. My name is Janice Charlton. I'm a mother of nine, and I'm married 30 years today. Instead of spending my 30th anniversary with my husband, I am here expressing my First Amendment rights. I had requested to speak last night, but I was told, last month, excuse me, and I was told I had to speak tonight instead. Here are a few things I think our community has a right to know. Everybody's talking about the masks, but the real thing with the masks is they don't want the adults in the building because they have an ulterior motive. I was a participant in the equity conducted by the Penn Equity of Excellence, which took place in the spring of '18. I was asked to be the parent representative since my husband and I have fostered children of all ethnic backgrounds, religions, financial status, as well as sexual preferences, unwanted pregnancies, and drug addiction. pregnancies, and drug addiction. I share how we, I shared how we chose Centennial as a school district for our family because it met the needs of all of our children. I am deeply saddened that the result of this study has chosen to teach our children to see color where elementary school's children see similarities in their friends, not their differences. A few years ago, my daughter Juliette was in first grade, and she started going by the name Julie instead of Juliette. And my sister asked her, she goes, "Oh, well, my teacher can't tell the difference between me and the other girl named Juliette." And my sister asked, she goes, "Teacher can't tell?" I said, "I know, one's short, one's tall, one's black, one's white, one's, you know, does dance, and the other one does cheerleading." You know, all these clear differences. But the children can't see that. And unfortunately, with the DEI that you've just implemented and changed and brought all the books in, and when I've asked to see them, I was denied access. A parent that pays taxes can't see the books that you guys purchased back in June. I am deeply saddened that the results of this study has chosen to teach our children to see color. Our country was founded on Judeo-Christian values, which foster freedom and human rights. How can you choose and doctrine such hate in our youngest of children? How can you declare systemic racism when so many of our biracial children are attending our schools? One of our principals even has biracial children in our district. How dare you? How can you say that you're improving the educational system, which is taking the rights of the parents away in the name of CDC regulations that are constantly changing? Many of the school board members are unmasked in indoor venues while you mask our children. I think that's the definition of a hypocrite. If you continue, if you continue to allow this Marxism to take over our district, that the rules should be fair for all. I'm a conservative Christian who had to make the very hard decision to remove my youngest children from this environment. I'm hoping this won't be permanent. And we don't give equal time to God, who's written on our currency. You don't teach it in our schools. I'm disappointed in you, Dr. Bedden. I met with you in August.
Your time is up.
You guys are a bunch of puppets, and you normally have to have your babysitters in here to make the jury that you do, the way they tell you to.
Thank you for speaking.
Okay, moving forward, consent agenda, Mrs. Islandberg?
6.1, does anyone care to pull anything? Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 6.1A... Oh, you do? Okay. Mr. Miller wishes to pull 6.1A. Anything else? Anyone? Seeing none? 6.1B approves the minutes from June 15, 2021, special meeting. 6.1C approves the minutes from June 22, Committee of the Whole Meeting. 6.1D approves the minutes from the August 17, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Second.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, 6.1A, Mr. Miller. Approves the minutes from June 8, 2021, work session, regular school board meeting. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, and Mr. Miller?
Yes. On that particular meeting, I strenuously objected to the fact that board members were not permitted to speak with, relative to the responsible contractor policy. I did ask at the end of the meeting during additional board comments that a record be made of that, and the only record made is that I made comments. I think the act was abhorrent that school directors were not permitted to speak to that motion. And I realize that you were not the secretary at that time, but I'm going to ask that these minutes be tabled so that an accurate correction can be made. I have since found out that the groups seeking the benefit from that contract made contributions to the Warminster Democrats, I'm sorry, the Bucks County Democrats in the amount of $30,000. And while I can't prove a direct connection, the timing is very suspicious.
Somebody have to take a vote on that?
We need a second if... Okay, so now we have to vote on motion to table.
All right, all those in favor of tabling the minutes?
We might need a roll call, I think.
Do a roll call.
Okay. Mr. Godikson?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Miller? Can you vote on that?
Yes.
Mr. Panofsky?
Yes.
Mr. Burdick?
Yes.
Mrs. Brancato?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
No.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Sure. Yes.
Mrs. Crossen?
No.
Motion passes 7-2.
Thank you.
Personnel, Mrs. Islandberg?
Thank you. 6.2 Personnel, be it resolved at the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, and I apologize, does anyone wish to pull anything from 6.2 Personnel? Seeing none. 6.2A, Retirement, 6.2B, Resignation, 6.2C, Authorization to Employ, 6.2D, Leaves of Absence, 6.2E, Suspension, 6.2F, Change of Status, 6.2G, Co-Curricular Addition, 6.2H, Teacher Leaders, 6.2I, Mentor, 6.2J, Award of Tenure.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Seeing none. Thank you. Motion passes. 6.3, anyone wish to pull anything from 6.3?
I don't wish to pull anything, but I have one question, if I might, before we vote on C, 6.3C. If you were to read that, it says that the parents moved from Warminster to Ivyland. Now, if in fact that is true, the student wouldn't have had to get a waiver to attend William Tenon High School because Ivyland is part of the school district. I suspect they moved to Northampton, not Ivyland, and I think that needs to be corrected.
Well, Mr. Miller, unfortunately, you are wrong. Part of Ivyland is part of Council Rock School District.
It depends which part of Ivyland.
Ivyland Borough is entirely within the school. It isn't. Which isn't?
No, so, so anything, the borough itself is part of Centennial, you are correct, but there is part of, it's, Ivyland is not just the borough, there is another part of Ivyland that's on the other side of Bristol Road that is part of the Council Rock School District.
Yeah, I've been caught by that one before, Mr. Martin.
I learned something that if that's true. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
I assume that's where they moved, though.
6.3A approves retroactively an exception to Policy 206. Assignment within district for student 20.6 to continue attending Willowdale Elementary School for the 2021-2022 school year. Parents will provide transportation. 6.3B approves retroactively an exception to Policy 206. Assignment within the district for student 7-13 to continue attending Willowdale Elementary School for the 2021-2022 school year. Parents will provide transportation. 6.3C approves retroactively an exception to Policy 202. Eligibility of Non-Resident Students and Policy 206. Assignment within district to allow student 10-18 to complete senior year, 2021-2022, at William Tenon High School without payment of tuition. Parents will provide transportation. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. 6.4 Appointments, none. Does anyone wish to pull anything from 6.5? Seeing none. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 6.5A, approves an exemption to Policy 707. Use of school facilities to waive fees for the Federal Air Force, I'm sorry, Air National Guard Base 2001 Red Horse Squadron, Detachment 1, to use the track at Klinger Middle School for physical training testing on Saturday, September 18, 2021, no cost to the district. 6.5B approves retroactively the exception to Policy 707. Use of school facilities for Warminster Municipal Authority to use the William Tenon High School Auditorium on August 19. Reduction of fees is $320. 6.5C approves retroactively the exception to Policy 707. Use of school facilities for the Warminster Township Police Department to use the Warminster Tenon High School Stadium and weight room on September 11, 2021. Reduction of fees is $1,194.
Second.
And I'd like to make a comment.
Thank you.
So just, you know, when we built these buildings, we built them with the community in mind and hoping that they would make use of the facilities, and I'm glad to see that happening.
Agreed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Seeing none. Motion passes. 6.6 Conferences and Travel, None. 6.7, does anyone wish to pull anything from 6.7? Seeing, seeing none? All those in favor? Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 6.7A, approves the quote from Dynamic Control Systems Incorporated to provide technical building automation systems and demand response support to the HVAC systems at Klinger and Log College Middle Schools in the 2021-2022 school year. District costs not to exceed $8,900. 6.7B approves the quote from I Ready for Math and Reading Intervention for Special Education Students. District costs not to exceed $49,644 and will be paid through ESAR funds. 6.7C approves retroactively the quote from Starlight Audio Visual and Lighting Solutions to replace the existing soundboard, sound console, and associated equipment at William Tenon High School. District costs not to exceed $77,540. 6.7D approves the quote from Pavement Maintenance Incorporated, Co-Star Number 014-176, to repair and seal existing cracks on the William Tenon High School tennis court. District costs not to exceed $5,960.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. 6.9, does anyone wish to pull anything?
Again, no, but I have one question, if I might. On B and C, I just, they're kind of similar. Is there a reason that we don't show the amounts of those contracts? And secondly, does the amount include transportation, or is that an extra item not covered by the fee that is being paid to those two institutions?
Dr. Bedden, we have somebody who can speak to that?
Dennis, is that, who's, Melissa?
6.9C, I'm sorry, B and C. Mr. Barton was inquiring about cost?
Cost of transportation, I'm just curious whether that includes transportation or that's, transportation is in addition to those costs, one of which is rather substantial.
That does not include transportation.
And how is that provided?
Transportation is provided by the district for both students.
And what is, what is the cost of that?
That I can't tell you with the cost of transportation. I believe one is a local place.
I think we should be giving the total cost of those two, and I don't know why we can't show what the costs are.
So, this is just a contract. The, these are contracts. These are not the, all the details of services students receive. So in order for our students to attend these programs, we have to have a contract with the schools. So these are just contracts that allow us to send our children to these schools. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's all of the details of the services the student will receive.
But there's an amount in each one of those, too.
Right, that's the cost of attending the school.
Why, why isn't that, that's what we're approving, that amount, I take it. Why, why can't we show what the amount is?
Because that's not a settlement agreement. That's a, the cost of a student attending, the transportation for the student attending the school, it could differ because our buses, that might just be one drop-off point. So it's not that the student is, is only one student on the bus. These students are riding buses that are already traveling to different schools. So it's not that the students have separate transportation to attend these schools. They're just riding on buses, our buses that go to, that hit those areas.
Ms. Bolton, I think the question is, why are the amounts, the amounts of the tuitions to the school, two schools not listed on the agenda?
If I can help here?
Yes, Mr. Miller.
I believe the problem here is that, you know, and we have several of these contracts within the district. What happens is, we make a contract with an institution so that space is available, but we don't always know that the space is going to be filled and by how many people. So we don't have an exact amount to put in the resolution. However, somewhere in that contract, there is a rate, whether it's by the day, or by the month, or by the student.
Well, these are for students. He's right. These are for particular students. We can get the rate of that, but transportation won't be included in that rate. We can get the rate, we can add the rate, the cost for attending the school, but transportation is not a part of that because our students are already, these buses aren't just taking one child to these schools. They're already riding, these buses are already dropping students off at schools, picking them up, and dropping them off, so it's not a transportation cost just for that one student.
It's a New Hope, they're not, they're not, our buses aren't going to New Hope or wherever the school is. But anyway, my, my basic question is, the contracts that we're approving have a specific dollar amount in the contract.
Yes.
Why can't we have that on the agenda? That's why specific question.
Yes, we can, we can, we can add that.
So just, well, let me, just to his point, for the sake of tonight, we're going forward, I think we should put it, but I'm looking at my book, because I keep a hard copy with me, thanks to Colleen, what he's asking to, to show, which is on the supplemental stuff that you'd have to log into Board Docs, the contract for Step Up Academy is showing $96,360. So just for the sake of getting through this moment, that's what you want to hear. And then the contract for New Hope for annual tuition is $38,400. And going forward, we can fix it, yes.
Yes, we can fix that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 6.9A, approves retroactively the contract with Therapy Source for psychological evaluations performed during the summer. 6.9B approves the 2021-2022 standard contract for services with a Step Up Academy for Student 14-1. 6.9C approves the 2021 standard contract for services with New Hope Academy for Student 11-3. 6.9D approves retroactively the standard contract for services with Woods Services Incorporated for services from July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2022, in the amount of $11,197.80. 6.9E approves the 2021 standard contract for services with Therapy Source. 6.9F approves the 2021-2022 agreement for services for Student 12-10 attending PA School for... for the Deaf. 6.9G approves the transportation contract between Centennial School District and Jolly Toddlers to provide transportation to and from Jolly Toddlers for Davis Elementary School students for 2021-2022 school year. Cost to Jolly Toddlers is $3,112.20. 6.9H approves the transportation contract between Centennial School District and Kitty Academy to provide transportation to and from Kitty Academy for McDonald Elementary School students for the 2021-2022 school year. Cost to Kitty Academy, $829.92. 6.9I approves retroactively the standard contract for ESY Services at Fairworld Academy for July 1st through August 12th, 2021. 6.9J approves the general contracted consultant agreement for the middle school success, the path to graduation, P2G, no cost to the district. 6.9K approves the 2021-2022 student internship agreement between Centennial School District and Anne's Choice Incorporated. 6.9I, I'm sorry, L, approves the service agreement for the Title I Equitable Non Public Services between Centennial School District and the Bucks County Intermediate Unit Number 22 from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024. 6.9M approves retroactively the contract with DocuSign for the e-signature business pro-edition for the 2021-2022 school year, district cost not to exceed $53,105 and will be paid with grant funds. 6.9N approves the purchase of SMARTS Curriculum for Secondary Special Education Curriculum, district cost of $10,800 to be paid by grant funds. 6.9O approves the agreement to participate in the Pennsylvania School Based Access Program, SBAP, for the 2021-2022 school year.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh.
I have a question on...
Questions?
On 6.9M, I know this is a very robust program, and I know we need it, but when it comes to the anniversary, I'd like to see if there's a possibility that the intermediate unit can buy this for the county and allow us to share it. We may not be able to do that. DocuSign may not be allowed, allow it, but the, if I am familiar correctly with the program, there's not a limit to the number of people who sign. It's, we're licensing the process of collecting the signature. So if we can enlarge our group, maybe, you know, $50,000 is, is a lot for that, that service.
So just to add clarity to that last part of your statement, depending on the package you get, does have parameters of how many people. This actually is because we had to increase the number of people who had access, but I will speak to Mr. Hoffman to see if there's a way to find out if there's a collective process to get access to a package deal, to your point.
Yeah, I mean, there's no, no system opposite.
No, it's, it's a great feature, and it adds a lot of flexibility for our parents and stuff who can't get to and from, or creates a hardship, so, and we, the usage has gone up. This actually is a dollar amount because we had to have more people have access, but I will speak to him or Ms. Malamus about whether this is something that the collective in our superintendent's meeting would benefit the entire county.
And it's also, this year we're paying for it with grant funding also this year, so it's important.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Do you have to read 6.10, 11, and 12 and note that we have no items?
I just, I haven't read them yet, we were...
Oh, okay, I was, I thought you were asking if we were done. Nevermind, sorry, sorry, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Seeing None, passes.
Before we move on for a second, can I ask one more time? If you do not have a mask on, please put one on.
Federal law says that we can refuse.
Well, and I can also ask you to leave the meeting.
Federal law says it's a public meeting.
It is a public meeting. You're being asked to wear a mask in a school building.
Against our federal law.
It's not a law, that is not a law what you're asking.
Please put your mask on.
Listen to me.
It's a request.
Power trip.
You have a lot of that.
Can you please leave the building?
The lady behind Carol Tolts needs to put on her mask also.
Everyone needs a mask on in this meeting. It is a school building.
It's our school.
You are absolutely correct. You do pay taxes as we all do. If you don't want to wear a mask, you have the option to leave. Your option is not to sit here without a mask.
My option is to sit here without a mask.
Chief Donnelly, could you please ask him to leave?
The gentleman.
In the front, on the left.
We have to leave.
And we have one behind Dr. Tolts.
I would need you to put a mask on if you're going to stay in the meeting.
I need you to abide by your health.
And the law, for that matter.
And the law, yeah, absolutely.
Communists.
You made it both, to us.
Yes, to the children, to every child.
To the child!
Every child.
To us!
Every child.
I'm one of those child.
So, so, behind Dr. Tolts?
Reside your position.
Behind Dr. Tolts?
Violation of your health says that your very policy is not valid.
So we'll take a short recess.
Oh, come on!
Unfortunately, I need to follow the law.
You can't follow the law, so you need to run away.
Uh, no, absolutely not. You need to wear a mask or leave.
Show me the law, show us the law.
The law is the law.
Show us where you get to bypass federal law and constitutional rights. Don't tell me about it.
It's from the state, you need to...
This thing doesn't give you the power to break the law!
That's an order!
This thing doesn't have the power to break the law either!
Do you think we don't know what the law is?
It was strict. It's not a law, it's a recommendation.
We're going to take a recess. If you're going to stay, you must put a mask on in this school building.
You don't have the power to enforce that.
Then you leave.
You can't make me.
Chief Donnelly, could you please ask them to leave? Isn't it about, maybe we could ask them with a different tone? Oh, please just put a mask on.
I'm a child, I'm a child! I hear what you said, you would protect children! I know what you're doing! Where's the protection now?
I'm not talking about, about this part. I'm talking about when the Bucks County Health Department changed their minds about masking, then all of a sudden, you know, we heard, well, the Bucks County Health Department said so. And I just thought to myself, last month, you didn't give a rats behind what the Bucks County Health Department said. And they said no masks then.
Mrs. Crossen.
Okay.
Mrs. Crossen.
Mr. Dixon.
I, I think a reason to refer to the Bucks County Health Department and show without following their current recommendation is because like I, for example, work with a health entity within the city of Philadelphia. The city of Philadelphia passed an ordinance.
We're not in the city of Philadelphia.
I understand. Let me finish. The city of Philadelphia passed an ordinance saying that anybody who works for a healthcare facility within its borders must be vaccinated by October the 15th. The employers, whether they like it or not, must comply with a state, with a, with a city regulation. In this case, if, for example, somebody with the authority, so it's, it's worth noting that the Bucks County Department of Health currently is basically saying that people should pursue a vaccine mandate. We are not doing that, and we don't intend to do that from what I'm hearing. However, if at some point, the county or some authority like the state with the masks says, you've got to do it, the school district will have to comply because that is the law.
Okay, so moving forward, we can take this agenda item, we can take this and everyone, we're going to vote on it anyway. So if you don't approve of it, that is absolutely.
Well, I'm just trying to understand it, and that doesn't, I'm, I'm just trying to understand what I'm voting on. And that's not, so I'm allowed to ask questions?
Absolutely, and you answered your question.
It will be mandated.
Transparency, please.
Transparency, exactly. So Dr. Ben answered your question. Are you comfortable with that answer?
Not really, not really.
Okay.
Okay, shh.
Okay, so.
Hold it, hold it. So moving, you can have a conversation up here if there's a conversation over there. So just give us a minute.
So you're not comfortable with this answer?
No, I'm not. Because honestly, my gut feeling says, by that being highlighted and the answer that I got, I'm kind of hearing like we're on notice.
Okay, so let me answer. You got to highlight it because we wanted to point out so you could see everything that was new. That's all that highlight means. If you looked at an entire document, everywhere that there was a change.
I understand that.
So, but.
I understand that.
Let me finish, Ms. Brancato. I just want to make sure that when you say that word highlighted, you're not processing it as that's saying, this is what we're going to do because.
No, I don't. I'm saying, you're not saying that's what we're going to do. But I, but you're not saying that's something we're not going to do.
Because I can't predict the future. I'm telling you that we are not recommending it.
Dr. Ben?
And you have acknowledged that things change, and I don't know what's going to, the future have.
Dr. Ben?
I pride myself in never saying something that is not true and that I can't hold up in my own individual. I don't control that totally. You're asking me to speak to something that I don't have total control over. And I think you got a perfect.
You know what a, do you know what a storm would be caused if we mandated that?
All the questions.
Okay, what?
But the point is that we are not.
But he won't say that we're not going to do it, Andrew.
The answer was we were not doing it and we're not recommending it right now.
You want to compare it to the city of Philadelphia, which none of us live there.
Can we please do a roll call vote?
It's called an analogy.
Can I ask a question? We had a student that earlier spoke tonight, you know, in regards to the masking and is at risk of dropping out of tenant. What do we do for a student like that to maintain that student in school?
So can we take a minute on the question and answer and, and take a vote on what we have right now? And then we'll come back to your question, Mr. Goddickson. Colleen, can we please do a roll call vote?
Sure. Mr. Martin?
I will vote aye reluctantly.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Panofsky?
Yes.
Mr. Burdenick?
Aye.
Mrs. Brancato?
No.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Yes.
Mr. Goddickson?
No.
Mrs. Crossen?
Yes.
Motion passes seven two.
Okay, Mr. Goddickson, your question?
The question was in my, and that's why I voted no, because I didn't get an answer. The question was, we had a student that spoke earlier today about the risk of dropping out because of a masking issue. What are we going to do for a student like that to maintain him in the system?
And what the student, I think, shared is the answer to that. We have offered alternatives that they have refused to accept because we cannot not allow him to attend and not in person. So we've tried to give other options that we have so that he can continue to get an education. And we also provide mental health counseling. We also provide social counseling. So a variety of things to try to work with the student, with the school counselor, who talks about the academic and employment ramifications, and also the social emotional aspect, which is why we ramped up on that staff. So we have, and we will continue to provide any type of supports, but they do have an option. We do have an online program that a number of students are very happy with. And, but the fact of the matter is, we don't have the choice to ignore the mandate and the requirement, which by the way, the order is driven and said that it is behind the actual communicable disease order from the Secretary of Health. So until it is litigated and told otherwise, we don't get to choose to ignore it. It is a fact and order that we, as legal counsel has said, and I've shared with you all those documentation before, and I'll send them again, we are expected to comply. So in essence, the one option that the student has still is to be in school, but we can't do it without a mask. We don't get to say you can come and other people have to comply. But we have offered, and he actually said that in his presentation, that we, he, he doesn't want to choose that option right now.
Alright.
So we will continue to talk and try to support him. Okay?
Mrs. Brancato?
So while I understand, while I understand that.
Mrs. Crosson?
Mr. Dixon?
I, I think a reason to refer to the Bucks County Health Department and show without following their current recommendation is because, like, I, for example, work with a health entity within the city of Philadelphia. The city of Philadelphia passed an ordinance-
We're not in the city of Philadelphia.
I understand, let me finish. The city of Philadelphia passed an ordinance saying that anybody who works for a healthcare facility within its borders must be vaccinated by October the 15th. The employers, whether they like it or not, must comply with a state, with a, with a city regulation. In this case, if, for example, somebody with the authority, so it's, it's worth noting that the Bucks County Department of Health currently is basically saying that people should pursue a vaccine mandate. We are not doing that, and we don't intend to do that from what I'm hearing. However, if at some point, the county or some authority like the state with the masks says you've got to do it, the school district will have to comply because that is the law.
Okay, so, moving forward, we, we can take this agenda item, we can take this and everyone, we're gonna vote on it anyway, so if you don't approve of it, and that, that is absolutely your right.
Well, I'm just trying to understand it, and that doesn't, I'm, I'm just trying to understand what I'm voting on. And that's not, so I'm allowed to ask questions?
Absolutely, and you answered your question.
It's going transparent. It will be mandated.
Transparency, please.
Transparency, exactly.
So, Dr. Bedden answered your question, are, are you comfortable with that answer?
Not really, not really.
Okay.
Okay, shh.
Okay, so-
Okay, hold it, hold it. So moving, you can have a conversation up here if there's a conversation over there, so just give us a minute.
So you're not comfortable with his answer?
No, I'm not, because honestly, my gut feeling says, by that being highlighted and the answer that I got, it ki- I, I'm kinda hearing like we're on notice.
Okay, so, let me answer. You gotta highlight it because we wanted to point out so you could see everything that was new. That's all that highlight means. If you looked at an entire document, everywhere that there was a change-
I understand that.
So, but-
I understand that.
Let me finish, Ms. Brancato. I just wanna make sure that when you say that word "highlighted," you're not processing it as that's saying, this is what we're gonna do, because we just said it.
No, I don't, I'm saying, you're not saying that's what we're gonna do, but I, but you're not saying that's something we're not going to do.
Because I can't predict the future. I'm telling you that we are not recommending it.
Dr. Bedden?
And you have acknowledged that things change, and I don't know what's gonna, the future have, but-
Dr. Bedden?
I pride myself in never saying something that is not true, and that I can't hold up in my own, uh, individual. I don't control that totally. You're asking me to speak to something that I don't have total control over, and I think you got a perfect example.
You know what a, do you know what a storm would be caused if we mandated that?
All the questions.
Okay, what?
But what, Mrs. Brancato?
Okay, can you please do a roll call?
But somebody else-
But he won't say that we're not going to do it, Andrew.
The answer was, we were not doing it, and we're not recommending it right now.
And you wanna compare it to the city of Philadelphia, which none of us live there.
Can we please do a roll call vote?
It's called an analogy.
Can I ask a question? We had a student that earlier spoke tonight, you know, in regards to the masking, and is at risk of dropping out of tenant. What do we do for a student like that to maintain that student in school?
So, can, can we take a minute on the question and answer and, and take a vote on what we have right now, and then we'll come back to your question, Mr. Goddickson. Colleen, can we please do a roll call vote?
Sure. Mr. Martin?
I will vote aye reluctantly.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Panofsky?
Yes.
Mr. Burdick?
Aye.
Mrs. Brancato?
No.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Yes.
Mr. Goddickson?
No.
Mrs. Crosson?
Yes.
Motion passes seven two.
Okay, Mr. Goddickson, your question?
The question was in my, and that's why I voted no, because I didn't get an answer. Um, the question was, we had a student that spoke earlier today about the risk of dropping out because of a masking issue. What are we gonna do for a student like that to maintain in, in the system?
And what the student, I think, shared is the answer to that. We have offered alternatives that they have refused to accept, because we cannot not allow him to attend and not in person. So we've tried to give other options that we have so that he can continue to get an education. And we also provide mental health counseling, we also provide social counseling, so a variety of things to try to work with the student, with the school counselor, who talks about the academic and employment ramifications, and also the social emotional aspect, which is why we ramped up on that staff. So we have, and we will continue to provide any type of supports, but they do have an option. We do have, uh, an online program that a number of students are very happy with. And, but the fact of the matter is, we don't have the choice to ignore the mandate and the requirement, which by the way, the order is driven and, and said that it is behind the actual communicable disease order from the Secretary of Health. So until it is litigated and told otherwise, we don't get to choose to ignore it. It is a fact and order that we, as legal counsel has said, and I've shared with you all those documentation before, and I'll send them again, we are expected to comply. So, in essence, the one option that the student has still is to be in school, but we can't do it without a mask. We don't get to say you can come and other people have to comply. But we have offered, and he actually said that in his presentation, that we, he, he doesn't want to choose that option right now.
Alright.
So we will continue to talk and try to support him, okay?
Mrs. Brancato?
So, while I understand, while I understand that, um, that, that, that we have to mask, I'm not crazy about it, but I am a rule follower. The one question I wanna ask you, and I don't know if Ms. Bolden maybe could answer, or Dr. Bedden, has anybody spoken one-on-one to this child and said to him, "Why can't you wear a mask?"
Alright, so, Dr. Best, but I wanna speak for me. I actually went over and met with the student and spoke to them there on the spot.
Did he tell you why he can't wear a mask?
Alright. And he said it to me in my face, it was my choice, cause I don't want to.
Did anybody, okay, so that's-
So that was the answer he gave me.
Okay, so, so let me, I'm not trying to be mean, but did anybody with a softer tone speak to him?
We actually had a very good conversation, we had one outside.
I'm talking maybe like somebody a little motherly?
Okay.
And Dr. Best was saying, you're not gonna be motherly.
I, I am not motherly, no.
No.
Uh, Dr. Henrich did speak with him about it.
Yes.
And did he open up maybe a little bit?
Uh, in conversation, he was, he was pretty clear, as he was with Dr. Bedden, that he simply was choosing not to do it. Uh, he did write a very nice email to Dr. Henrich the following day, saying he was gonna go for our virtual option because, um, he didn't want to, uh, have any type of conflict, and tonight was the first I heard about him exploring a GED.
That took a lot of guts for him to come?
Mm-hmm.
And I suspect that it is, he ma- you know, I suspect, I don't know for sure, um, but I suspect, you know, there may be reasons why he doesn't feel comfortable wearing a mask besides the fact that he doesn't like the rule. Because sometimes-
Point of order, I mean, we're starting to get into discussing a student's private communications with-
Okay, I, I-
I don't think we can discuss that, can we?
Nope, not according to the teaching.
Individual students' discussions with whoever?
I'm trying to say, what I'm trying to say is, it would be stinking nice if we had some compassion.
Mrs. Brancato, I'm not sa- I'm having some big compassion, there's HIPAA laws.
Sometimes people just need to be talked to.
Okay, alright, so, moving forward.
The, the question was called.
Let's just switch back over to, um, can you-
So if, if you don't mind, I, I-
Can I, can I, can I say something?
Absolutely.
Um, Ms. Brancato, you're right, it's, we, once a student is in CVLA, they are still a Centennial student, so the student is still assigned their regular high school counselor and the support staff, so, um, I'm sure that we will have someone, we will check to see if someone has followed up, and we will follow up. I, I agree, I agree.
That's all we're asking for, but it's too hard for these people.
Um, 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 that's what I'm trying to answer.
They don't always agree with something, but these are kids. Come on, let a kid take it out of here, that's crazy. Let another kid tell us he's gonna drop out of school.
He was also sent home from school two days in a row.
Hold on a second, remember? Um, you know, we need to have compassion, maybe you don't understand what it's like. Maybe you don't, Andrew.
After your party, you're gonna go on.
So we will, we will, we will make sure that there is additional follow-up-
I hope so.
Um, following tonight's meeting, um-
Is somebody nice, like, just talk, but come on, man.
Yes, we, we will make sure that there's additional, um, follow-up, especially, um, someone who may have, already have a relationship with the student.
Thank you very much. Alright, Mrs. Islandberg, can you continue with seven point two, please?
Oh, I had a question about that too, sorry. So, we got it? Can I talk, uh, Shelley, I'm supposed to-
I'm the first.
Oh, sure, I'll be quiet, go ahead. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, seven point two approves the revisions to the organizational chart 2021-2022 school year effective September 14th, 2021, as per the attached.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Ms. Brancato?
So I just wanted to ask, and you may have told me before, so, but I don't care, I'm asking again. So this, this chart that we're looking at, the School of Board Directors, the Superintendent, Solicitor, the Board Secretary, and then underneath that, we don't have any names next to these, so I'm not really even sure what these people do. Like, I know who the nursing coordinator is, I know who Mrs. Bolden is, Dr. Best, I know those, but with these other positions, I don't understand who they are and what they do. Do, can, I mean, is it, are we allowed to put a name with that? Can, can we get a name with those?
We can, we can.
Because that wouldn't, maybe I couldn't understand.
So, we can give you a chart with who's currently in those positions, uh, if you'd like, and it'll be helpful, so we can do that for you, Ms. Brancato, but all of these actually had names when they were appointed and the board voted on them, but people come and go, so we do an org chart based on position, so that we're not having to go back and change if someone leaves or resigns. But you absolutely, you know, I don't know who on here you don't know that you have a concern about, but we can give you one that has everyone's name in it, in the weekly report if you like.
Okay.
That would be helpful.
That'd be helpful.
I do have another question in regards to this chart as well. Um, our Director of Equity and, has been moved from Human Resources over to a new position. Does that mean that the budget transfer would also take that money out of Human Resources?
The, the person is just changing who they are assigned to. The, the FTE count and allocation for the position doesn't change.
But the money, but the money was over in Human Resources.
It would move over to the, that department, yes. Nothing changes in the amount of the dollar, it just moves over to that person's department.
But does the Human Resource Budget get reduced by that amount?
Yes, that, that, that allocation for the FTE portion of it, for staffing, moves over there, yes. But the budget for operations doesn't necessarily change.
Any additional questions? Can we do a roll call?
No, I'm sorry, Matt, Matt, and also, uh, tonight, before we've updated this, I will send you, Ms. Brancato, the link that has, uh, the people who, the names already that exist that are public.
I appreciate that, I probably won't get to read it till about 3 a.m., but I will read-
But I mean, in the meantime, that'll give you quicker access, that you can see the people who are, because it's public on our website for everyone to see, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Panofsky?
Yes.
Mr. Burdick?
Aye.
Mrs. Brancato?
No.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Yes.
Mr. Goddickson?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Crosson?
Yes.
Motion passes eight one.
Moving on, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, seven point three approves the letter of agreement with the Centennial Education Association to update and reassign one co-curricular position in the collective bargaining agreement for the digital communication position, as per the attached.
Second.
Thank you, uh, comments, questions?
This is for eight point one, I'm sorry, eight point one?
Seven point three.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? See, none motion carries. Moving on, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, seven point four approves the submission of the Centennial School District Board of School Directors vote for the 2022 PSBA Officer Candidates as follows. President-elect Sabrina Becker or David Schapp, select one. Vice President Allison Mathis, Easton Representative Edwin Brown, and PSBA Insurance Trust Trustees Richard Ferrex, William Lukoff, Nathan Means, as per the attached.
Second.
Thank you.
I, I think we need to treat this resolution-
President-elect, you gotta pick one.
No, Mr. Miller is gonna speak on this.
I, I think we need to treat this resolution in two parts, because there are several of the candidates do not have an opponent, and we can vote for tho- them all at one shot. Uh, or not vote at all, because either way, they're, you know, they, they are assured of victory.
They still be chosen.
Uh, what it comes down to are, are the two that we need to make a choice from. And just, you know, by way of explanation, uh, I said this last night at MBIT. Uh, the, the, PSBA is a, a member association, we have a Leadership Development Committee that tries to develop leaders for the future. I, I did serve on that committee this year, so I am familiar with the two candidates for President-elect. Uh, we met, however, in early June, a lot has happened since then. Uh, the reason neither of these candidates has an asterisk next to their name, because neither of them displayed a quality that made the Leadership Development Committee feel that they were ready for leadership. Uh, neither has had an, an officer position, for example, on the governing board. Uh, and because of that, uh, we watched carefully to see the, the performance of the other, of these two members since that time, and my observation has been that Mr. Schapp has been a, a more, uh, organized school board member than, uh, Ms. Becker. So that, that's, that's my recommendation, but everyone does have their own right to vote, and, uh, for those two offices, we need to make a, a roll call vote by name.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Panofsky?
I will say, um, Mr. Miller mentioned, we talked about this at Middle Bucks last night, we did, um, at Middle Bucks decide to give our vote to Mr. Schapp. I have had the opportunity to look at both their biographies, they are both very, very, talented and very skilled, but I trust Mr. Miller's years of experience on this, so I followed his example.
Pretty bad. Any other, um-
Pretty bad.
Well, let me just, uh, make a statement, because I was at MBIT as well last night, and, and I think what was important, and what MBIT did was, they did send out the information and it gave us the opportunity to look at their video and their, um, resume, and certainly Mr. Schapp, you know, in my opinion, you know, had a more presentable, um, resume and, and video presentation. Um, but I think it might be something that the rest of the board members should go home and take a look at.
Mr. Dixon?
Um, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Goddickson's, um, suggestion that we maybe take our own independent look. I was going to suggest, uh, that I'm also more than happy to follow my esteemed colleagues, Mr. Miller, Mr. Panofsky, Mr. Goddickson, if they've seen this presentation and they took a vote last night, that's good enough for me. Uh, but my question, I mean, so I would suggest, unless there's an objection amongst one of us, that we simply amend the motion to vote for Mr. Schapp and be done with it, but if other people feel that they need to go and research the whole thing, that's fine.
When, when do we have, like, when does this have to be done by Mr. Miller?
October 17th, I believe.
October 17th.
So can't we table this until we can do our own research? Because I, for one, am not gonna follow you. Sorry.
Yeah, no, nothing more will come from PSBA, and, you know, a logical question might be why, uh, the current Vice President, uh, was not advanced, uh, to run for President-elect, and, uh, the simple answer is, uh, he did not perform very well as Vice President, and the Leadership Development Committee felt that these two, despite the lack of experience, uh, deserved to be in a higher position than the person who served last year as Vice President.
So we have another meeting before this is due?
Uh, I, I'm not a hundred percent certain of that date. Uh, I don't know if the Acting Secretary does-
Is it in October?
It's, it's either the 7th or the 17th.
So we have at least one more meeting?
Okay, so we can table this till the next meeting?
Yeah, we have the committee of the whole meeting on the, um, 28th of September.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to table this until the committee of the whole meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving forward, um, policies, Mr. Panofsky?
So we have a number of initial policies for initial distribution, um, a lot of these have to do with things that were handed down from the state, that we had to modify our policies to, um, conform with state code, so the policies presented for initial distribution, did anyone have any questions about any of them in particular?
Uh, only one, and Ms. Panofsky, if I might, which is, uh, G, which is listed as dating violence, and I'm sorry, I'm not in favor of dating violence. My questions are twofold. One, reading the policy, at what point might parents become involved in this process? And number two, it's not uncommon that a student from our school district might happen to date a student from an adjoining or some other school district where this type of thing could possibly occur, and this policy addresses if the students are both from our school district, if I read it correctly. Uh, I was just curious if this incident involved a Centennial student and a Upper Moreland student, how would that be addressed? And also, where in the process do the parents become involved?
Go ahead, Dr. Best. So, uh, the parents become involved, you know, immediately after we're, we're made aware, uh, we report to them. Uh, if students attend different schools, we may not always know about what had occurred. Um, sometimes we will receive information from law enforcement from other municipalities, but I can't say with certainty that if a William Tenet student had an issue with a student from another district, that we would necessarily know about it. In a lot of cases, when that happens, it's the parents reporting it to us, so that we can provide counseling services at school, um, not the other way around usually.
You work with the other, if, if a he said, she said, and it's Upper Moreland and Centennial, how, how do you perhaps resolve that, do you at Upper Moreland get together and have a joint meeting, or do you deal with one, they deal with the other, or do you forget about, I mean, what happened?
That, that's handled by law enforcement, and it would, depending on where the incident occurred, is, is the municipality that would handle it.
It, it may not rise to the, reading this, it, it may, it may not rise to, um, law enforcement. Uh, some of this was discussion at a school to see how it works out, and then if you need law enforcement, you do it, but-
Right, if, if it's not being mitigated by law enforcement, we would provide supports for our student here at school, uh, but we wouldn't collaborate with the other school district.
Will this also be a situation where you have to report this to child abuse or child find?
Depending on the situation and the age of the children. Cause we have seniors who are 18. Yeah, it, it usually is more of a police matter than anything else.
I'm wondering, to Mr. Martin's point, if a student in Centennial is accused by a student from someplace else? I mean, does that even, does the policy touch, like, I mean, is that gonna, like, be something that the policy deals with, or how do you de- like, suppose you as principal get a, I don't know how this would even occur, like, I mean, does the school district, Upper Moreland, say, "Hey, we have, uh, you know, we call up principal, uh, you know, uh, 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 well, you're not principal anymore, I'm sorry, uh, but you know, we, we call up, uh, the principal of the, of the William Tenet High School, say like, we have a student here who's saying such and such and such and such." I mean, is that, I, I don't know how does that-
We, we would recommend that they call the police.
Yeah, and I, and if I may, um, these are PSBA recommended, um, this is not something we crafted ourselves, and all of these cases would be taken on a case-by-case basis as it is. So, we could sit all day and do what-ifs and scenarios, but it, it may be a, a rabbit hole sort of situation.
Mr. Miller, go ahead.
That's not entirely accurate, uh, not everything and every policy is required by law. What these policies represent-
I didn't say it was required by law, just for the record.
What these policies represent are models that are developed from a cross-section of policies by school districts across the state. Uh, but, let's take eight point two in particular, we had a situation in our own district, and Mr. Martin, I, I don't know if you were at the meeting when it happened, but, uh, Mr. Schaffler and I went to a township meeting in Southampton, expecting to talk about the proposed parking lot at the Davis Elementary School. And, uh, Mr. Stevens, uh, who then was a solicitor, or a, uh, township supervisor, uh, preferred to question us about the knife that was, uh, brought out at Stackpole Elementary School. Uh, it was only a butter knife, and it was in the lunchbox, uh, on the first day of It was only a butter knife, and it was in the lunchbox on the first day of school. And because in New York State, a fourth grader had been arrested by the police for a knife, the principal at the time decided not to report it to the district or anybody else. And apparently, what happened is, the student went home and said, Mom, Billy brought a knife to school today. So Mom called Chief McPherson, and it became an incident outside of the district. The district didn't even know about it. And Mr. Schaffler and I were the first to hear about it. We did get parking approved. But it created a problem in the district, and ultimately, we decided that our district's policy would be, we report everything, and we let the police decide whether or not it's actionable. So, you know, each of these policies does have, they act as a guide, and from time to time, we do need to grant an exception to certain policies. But each of these policies is necessary, and I think the way they're presented does represent the best interests of the district.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any other questions?
Okay, so we're going to move on to policies presented for adoption. Does anyone want to pull any of them? So be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors adopt 8.2A, Policy 146.1, a trauma-informed approach; 8.2B, Policy 218.1, weapons; 8.2C, Policy 800.1, electronic signatures; and Policy 8.2D, which is Policy 828, fraud. Could I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on any of these? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Mr. Burdick, I turn it over to you.
Would anyone like 9.1, 9.2, 9.3, or 9.4 polled? Okay. 9.1, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approve the schedule of bills, investments, cafeteria fund budget reports, and general fund cash receipt summary, June 2021, July 2021, and August 2021, as per the attached. 9.2 approves the 2021 budget transfers for June, July, and August, as per the attached. 9.3 approves the pending bills list, as per the attached. And 9.4 approves the pre-approved paid bills list, as per the attached.
Second.
So any board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
Any board discussions and comments? Mr. Miller?
Yes. I probably should have said something earlier while there are more people in the room. But I would like to get something on the record, which is just the very basic way that boards of education are intended to operate within the Commonwealth. And it's a very fundamental concept. No individual school director has authority by themselves or out of this room unless the board grants that authority to them. When we're in this room, we act collectively to approve or disapprove of the resolutions that are presented for vote. Some of them apparently are more important to some people than others, and we saw a demonstration of that this evening on 7.1. The thing that everyone needs to remember in our community, and even among the board members themselves, is that once the board chooses a direction, that resolution becomes an obligation of all nine board members. And the only way that can be changed is if two members of the board that were on the winning side of that discussion make a motion to review or revise what was done, or if administration makes a recommendation that's independent for a reason. I can tell you from my own personal feelings, there have been three policies or three actions by the board this year that I was very much opposed to. I don't think anyone can say that I haven't supported the action of the board, and that is the obligation that we've taken as a oath of office.
Okay, thank you. All right. District policy report, Mr. Panofsky?
I'm going to keep this really short. We are still working our way through our policies to make them in line with state. And Colleen, when is the next admin? You just sent it to me today. The next admin policy meeting?
Today, so the 21st.
21st, so we have our next administrative policy committee meeting, the 21st. And we will just continue to plow through the policies until we get everything in line to where it should be.
Mrs. Islandberg, DCIU?
Thank you. I spoke with Dr. Hoffman earlier. He indicated the school year is off to a great start. They are looking for people to join the IU family, seeking drivers and paraprofessionals. There are great career opportunities with great flexibility. Reports, many reports from last month focused on our work in supporting students experiencing homelessness in five counties, and that work will continue. Thank you.
Thank you. PSBA, Mr. Panofsky?
My reports tend to be lately tied up with Mr. Miller, so I'm going to defer to Mr. Miller on PSBA.
Well, mine is only legislative, so you can at least talk about conference.
Oh, we do have a conference, the, which Ms. Crossen, Mr. Miller, and myself are going to be attending, which is in November, October, November.
October 25th.
Thank you, October 25th. I don't have my calendar in front of me. And I, Mr. Miller and I attended it last year as well, and it just kind of goes through what PSBA is doing policy-wise, and takes up new ideas and new business and runs through, and I find it very interesting. So I'm glad to be attending again.
Well, that's a good segue then, because the Dalgeth Assembly sets the platform for PSBA for the year, and we try to anticipate what the General Assembly is going to try to do, and whether or not we support it, and how it affects our member districts. We have three major things going on right now in the General Assembly, which is at recess. Senate returns on September 20th. The House returns on September 27th. And right now, there is activity trying to get them both back early so they can change the mask policy that the Commonwealth Secretary of Health has already laid out. The two that I am excited about are, for the very first time, we have a meaningful opportunity for charter school reform. There are bills running in the House and in the Senate that would absolutely reduce the cost of our district significantly if they were passed. And what's encouraging is that both bills have bipartisan support. Among the House members in Bucks County, we have 13 members of the House, and seven of them are Republican, and all seven have supported this bill. The other one literally comes from Act 1 of 2013, which was signed into law on the stage of William Tenet High School. And unfortunately, it got through the House 239 to 2. And then the Senate decided to add a 35-year phase in, which certainly is going to be beyond my lifetime, and it never got back to the House for concurrence. So we're seeing it come back in its original form, and wherever anybody has had an opportunity to let, we don't have to let our legislators know, all of them are supporting the bill. But if you know people around the state, say, hey, you know, give your legislator a call and tell them you want meaningful charter school reform.
And, Mr. Miller, I think if I'm correct, in the last liaison update I got, it said that the chair of the House Education Committee has signed on to the charter school reform bill.
Well, we have a new chair of the House Education--
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Godickson, MBIT?
Thank you. Well, we actually had several meetings at MBIT this summer. It's been a very unusual summer for MBIT. Nothing really earth-shaking, other than the constant, you know, decision-making over the health and safety plan. At one of the meetings, actually, Mr. Panofsky ended up becoming the acting chair for the day, because neither the vice chair or president was present. But, you know, nothing really earth-shaking, and as Mr. Bettin mentioned earlier today, there is some conflict between the health and safety plans between the district and Last night, we did have a reorganization, and I will let, you know, John actually talk a little bit more about that, because it took place before I arrived. But other than that, we had a, we decided on a contract for the roofing with Mans, which is a local roofing company, not having to worry about the supercontracts with the unions. But other than that, it's been, you know, fairly quiet. And part of the reason that we had the reorganization was due to the chair from Central Bucks, John Gamble, had resigned from his position in Central Bucks. So I'm going to let Mr. Panofsky take it from there.
Thank you. Um, yeah--
Mr. Panofsky?
Yes.
Do you mind, before you--
Go ahead.
I do want to, because I did talk to Kathy before the meeting, but I did want to understand where we are with the masking situation, because that has been a question from both parents, board members, and administration. And I understand that it didn't get acted upon, the decision wasn't--
It did not get acted on last night.
So what is the next plan, so that we have some idea of when their decision is going to be made? And I did talk to her about the dynamic, and it's a challenge for them, because they're serving four districts. But the idea that we also internally have conflicting things going on with parents in their household with students, I don't know where we are in that, and I just want to know if someone can speak to that, or when it's coming back.
I believe there was supposed to be an executive meeting scheduled--
Yeah.
--in the near future.
Yeah, we're going to have an executive session scheduled in the very near future, where we are going to talk that out and figure that out.
Yeah, there was significant discussion, Dr. Bettin, and actually, thank you, because I used much of the material you distributed yesterday to support the argument that no change to the health and safety plan was necessary, because the state has spoken, and we cannot, you know, they supersede the health and safety plan. So I made a motion to table, which was approved. Then following that, there were members of the executive council who still wanted to see the issue through. They wanted to have a special meeting to discuss it, and because there's a legal and a safety aspect to this, we then decided it should be an executive session. And ultimately, logic prevailed, and we'll have an executive session before our October executive council meeting on that same day. And whatever comes out of that is what we'll vote on in the room. But again, it's, it's really just an exercise, because unless something changes in the legislature, we're in the county, we're at a transmission rate over 100, and the state has called the shot. And that's, that's what we're doing. So between now and then, we're following the state's mandate.
I guess I was, and I can call her, because it wasn't acted upon. I didn't ask her, what is the current model for their mask exemption? Because it--
They're using the Central Bucks form.
Because I did, she asked, and I did provide her--
I require a medical signature.
Right.
And I would say, and I'm going to go on record, and I did send her a copy of ours--
Mm-hmm.
--at her request, that form would be deemed not compliant. And my issue is, that's a different message, and why do they get to choose Central Bucks form? That's a problem for me in our administration. Central Bucks doesn't run MBIT. There should be a collaborative conversation that happened, because now we have conflicting guidance and standards that's creating havoc for some of our parents, as well as, again, the things outlined as becoming a concern, as being brought to our attention, that our administrators, our high school, have to manage. So I would hope that some discussion occurs around that, and a little bit more equitable conversation before decisions like that are made, because they chose to use another district's form, and we didn't know that.
So I can tell you, the feedback was that it was, from her standpoint at least, what we were told is it was a timing issue, and I think it's, I think it's because the solicitor for Central Bucks is a solicitor for Middle Bucks as well. She just asked for that form from them, because she said she had to figure something out quickly. But there--
That's an important point, because you're right, Central Bucks does not run--
Absolutely.
--MBIT. And what Central Bucks does affects our students. And that's who, you know, we have three seats on that board, and that's what we should be concerned about, is those three seats, because there is one Central Bucks school director who agrees with the Centennial directors, and does the chair. So between the five of us, we will, as long as nobody changes the district's position, be able to win that point.
Mr. Dixon?
I just have, it sounds like, you know, as you noted, Mr. Miller, because of the order of the governor, it's sort of beside the point. But I'm wondering, at MBIT, with a mask mandate, I would just imagine that with a certain percentage of the activities there, you could argue that people ought to be wearing face coverings anyway.
Yes.
Right? So I'm wondering, like, does that factor into people's, I mean, like, when you have, like--
I mean, like, the dental profession, they have to wear them whenever they're with people.
Yeah, the answer is it does.
Like, anybody doing, like, armpentry, anything where you could inhale--
It does. She did speak to that to me on the phone, that they do--
Yeah.
I think that part of the decision-making process also--
Right.
--that part, that there is a tension to, you know--
The problem that comes up is that some time ago, somebody fashioned the notion that when you are in that building, you're representing everyone in that building. But that's not how it works. We have three seats on that board representing our interests as partners in that facility. And Central Bucks has three, Council Rock has two, and New Hope-Soulberry has one. And that was determined based on the number of students we have in the building. And it's not been challenged since. But we're there to exercise our share of that facility. We have three board members on the executive council of MBIT, and our job is to represent the position of Centennial School District.
So, very quickly, to get to the reorganization, which is what Mr. Godickson was turning it over to me for. As he mentioned, unfortunately, Middle Bucks lost a great, a great advocate for the school when Mr. Gamble resigned, and so we lost our chair of our board. The board decided last night to elevate our current vice chair, Mr. Montu Patel, from New Hope-Soulberry to the position of chair. And I am honored that they chose me to be the vice chair of the board for the remaining three months of this year, which basically means if Montu doesn't show up, I run the meetings, and I'm in charge of the committee of the whole meeting. And we kept Ms. McKee from Council Rock as the secretary. So that's the makeup of that council for the rest of the year.
And, John, if you would just mention, I know that the district or MBIT also did hire a new--
Oh, business manager.
--business manager, but I do not remember his name.
Frank Ayata.
Okay.
He, very smart. He's coming to us from the State College area, or he lives in State College. The background in both, all sorts of different areas, currently working on an EDD, has his MED through the PASBO courses with Wilks. Very smart, young, charismatic man, and I'm very, we were very lucky to get him. And we've also redone the administration, we reorganized the org chart for the administration to the savings of somewhere around $100,000, I believe it was, by doing that as well.
I'm disappointed in both you guys, because you left out--
Well, I was going to say, I'm not done yet.
Okay.
So what I left out is, is the fact that, that MBIT has the state teacher of the year for technical schools. He is the video web design teacher.
That's the second time for that. I was pleased that over the last four years, we've gone from 200 empty seats to being maxed out. We don't have room--
Yeah.
--for any more students. So one of the things that we're-- So one of the things that we're going to be looking at is how we fit more students into that building. And, you know, I happen to think that the space that we're using to park Central Bucks School District's buses for free might be a good space to expand, and in fact, maybe the facility could be adapted for classroom use.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay, communications, are there any communications? Are there any additional comments? Colleen?
I'm chairman. I have a question.
Yes.
Briefly.
Sure.
Briefly. And that is that we all experienced a rather significant emotional event last Saturday. And I was just wondering, since none of the students in this school district were even born when that tragedy occurred in 2001, did the school district have any special, meaningful events to enlighten the students as to what occurred that day, especially with the significance we have here in Bucks County? Without a lot of details, I'm just curious if there were any, and if so, basically, what we do...
It looks different by level, more extensive at the high school level, where that event is now actually part of history and a chapter in textbooks. Moments of silence were held during morning announcements in the buildings, obviously not on Saturday, because we weren't in session, but when we returned to school.
Is that all?
Yes.
Okay.
Obviously, there were class...
That's disappointing that you had no other special things to remember that day in the education.
No, there's, like I said, there's classrooms discussions held in social studies classes at the applicable levels. It's different in the lower levels than it is in the upper levels.
Thank you, Dr. Best. Colleen, were there any other? No? All right. Calendar events?
Can we have a public comment? Are they, public comment, right? Can I do public comment?
Yes. She said she has a public comment.
May we have a process for that?
I would like to address that process, that it's actually in violation. My name is Terry Sprangle, 1051 Valley Road, Warmer, PA.
Nate, can you put the timer on, please?
I will wait.
One second, just let him put the...
Sure.
So you have three minutes, like everyone else?
Mm-hmm. Not planning on going over three minutes.
Okay.
Mr. Burden, this policy has been addressed in your, in your school district, finding that it was already violation of the First Amendment of the Constitution. You are not allowed to limit the public comment in any way, shape, or form, unless it's under emergency action by the state, which means Wolf would have to make an emergency action. In order for you guys to limit public comment or make it stop so that everybody has to write in first for public comment in any way, shape, or form, it's actually in violation of Sunshine Act 710.1. Public comment cannot be violated, as it's a First Amendment right. Only allowed if and under emergency orders by the state that it can be violated, and you know this, because Mr. Simon Campbell spoke on it for five minutes at your district, and it's on YouTube, if you would like to see it as well. You know that it is in violation of the, it's in a direct violation as of right now, and you should have withdrew this immediately. Everybody should have the right to speak openly and that public comment, and should not have to submit any comments prior to the board meeting or anything else. You know this as well. We are allowed to speak openly. It's a Sunshine Act violation to limit public comment and to make people submit any public comment that can be reviewed or limited prior to the meetings. We are, as the public, we are allowed to engage and be part of these meetings. You cannot limit us and tell us we cannot be part of these meetings in any way, shape, or form. And not only that, but it's also a discriminatory policy for anybody that may not have a computer access to them, because you are forcing people to email these public comments, as well as register for a public comment too, as well. So I wish to, I wish to force you guys to withdraw this action that you have on your website, because it is in direct violation of the Sunshine Act. That is my public comment.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you for speaking.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
To the Board, the process we used was reviewed by a solicitor. I'm also reading verbatim the open records, PA.gov, Sunshine Act. Can the public comment during, can the public comment during public meetings? Yes, the Sunshine Act gives the public the right to comment on issues that are and may be before the Board. Agencies must provide a reasonable, reasonable opportunity for residents and/or taxpayers to comment on issues before a decision takes place. Agencies are permitted to establish rules to oversee public comment by, for example, limiting the time for each comment. The OCR encourages agencies to take care when imposing time limits on public comment. Three minutes is common limit, and maybe more than enough as a public comment meeting. They actually stated directly in there. So we were advised when we revamped these by legal counsel, who attended a workshop, that the structure is what you have to comply with. She is absolutely correct that they have to have a right to speak, but you are, you can have a structure in place to govern it. And we don't require someone, they've been told they can bring it. We actually added more to it, saying that they can actually have those attached to the minutes if they want to. People spoke tonight who didn't give us a written statement. People also are able to call in and request, and she takes them that way. So you don't have to have a computer to sign up.
So can I ask a question? So are you saying that if somebody wants to make a public, make a comment at our board meetings, they no longer have to submit in writing that they want to come that night and what they want to say?
No, that's not what I was saying. I was referring to the idea that they have to give us a written statement. The topic of what they want to speak about is a part of the procedure, because the way your structure is designed, you have a process that talks about certain portions you can only speak to that, when it's an agenda item. The only way we would know that is if they tell us what the topic is. We also ask for them to sign up, because we try to make sure that everyone has an equal chance to actually have access.
So, you know, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't use to do that.
You actually...
They could come and fill out a green card.
It says it on the website that it has to be by email.
Like, we didn't make them, excuse me?
Nobody came in the past.
Oh, I don't mean last year. You know, last year's is...
No, I mean even prior.
You're right. But, but that was our procedure. You could come, fill out a green card, and then you could speak.
Like this?
And that has been, and that has been not the case for going on 18 months now, because of we've been in COVID. We couldn't do...
I understand about COVID, but I'm saying now...
Let me finish, Ms. Brancato.
All right. You know, I can't ever finish, but you can go right ahead.
You did finish.
You go right ahead. You go, go, go.
We had this conversation at the last meeting at Davis, and this is the procedure we've actually, and we actually added more opportunity to people to actually have their stuff put on record. So we actually tried to improve it and actually have a process. Also, the attorney presented to the Board that what we do here, going back and forth, it's supposed to be public comment, not a back and forth. So you can receive the information, then the rules say the President is supposed to either just acknowledge and then assign either the administration or the board member who may have knowledge of that to follow up with the person.
Dr. Bettin?
It's all about a process to make sure that everyone has a fair and equitable chance to speak.
Um, Dr. Bettin, I think that when we switched over to the new website, the phone number was removed from the section. It is not, actually not on the website. Can we just have that added on?
We can fix that.
Thank you.
If there's a correction when we transfer it and over, Ms. Sprangle, we'll get it fixed.
And can we make sure someone can...
It says only email, and it says specifically that it must be emailed, and your comment in the email body or attachment. So it must be emailed. It says specifically on...
We will get that fixed. Absolutely. Thank you.
We have the right to set a policy, as long as we apply the policy consistently to everyone within the district.
But you're not allowed to limit the public comment...
And by the way...
And make us forced to send it in prior to be able to be limited.
We recently increased the speaking time from two minutes to three minutes. So it's only a year ago that we did that. The only thing we cannot prevent is recording of meetings. We can't, we can't, we can prevent signs, we can prevent protests, we can prevent outbursts. All of those things are permissible. And they are written into our policy.
Schedule of events? So we'll make sure that that, the phone number gets at it, so that somebody can just call and say, I want to speak.
Right, but you're not allowed to limit the people that are in the audience to be able to not speak as well. That's actually a violation of the Sunshine Act. That's where the violation, and Mr. Burden knows it, because he has Simon Campbell...
I'm sorry, Ms. Sprangle, Policy 903 specifically states that you're not to mention board members by name, and that you can't speak about individual board members, so if you would address the whole Board, please.
I am addressing the whole Board and stating that this was also presented in Pensbury, so that Mr. Burden was aware of it, as well as the court literature that was ruled on...
Again, the policy states that you are not to...
Which, which was also the court literature that was ruled on, that showed that this was a violation.
She had her three minutes, Mrs. Crosson.
Your time is up. I will make sure, we will make sure that that is taken care of.
I would have the solicitor review it again to make sure, as well as the YouTube video on Simon Campbell for the five minutes that he spoke at Pensbury, and regarding to the court case that were referenced.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving forward, schedule of board meetings, calendar events, Mr. Dixon?
On Thursday, September the 16th, all offices and school, all schools and offices will be closed in observation of Yon Kupur. On Monday, September the 27th, at 7:00 PM, there is a BCIU board meeting at BCIU. On Tuesday, September the 28th, at 7:00 PM, there will be a committee of the whole meeting in this boardroom. On Monday, October the 11th, all schools will be closed for an in-service day. On Monday, October the 11th, at 5:30, MBIT Executive Council will be meeting, so the schools are closed, but you guys still have to go to work. And on Tuesday, October 12th, at 7:00 PM, same, you know, right here, same meeting, same room, the Centennial School Board meeting, work, regular meeting. I'm sure that'll be a whiz-bang like they always are.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Can I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn.